Good morning, if you'd rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the January 29th Commission meeting. We would like you to silence your phone if you haven't done that, and at that binder next to the edge of the, yeah, next to Dana White's assistant is the information you may need if you are looking for something about today's agenda. We'll go ahead and start with.
Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
Second.
A motion and a second?
We're gonna need an amendment.
Yes.
I'll make that amendment to defer item number 13 until next week when we have a full commission.
Thank you. We need a second.
Second.
We have a motion to defer item number 13 until, let's see, I don't even know what the date is, next week, February something, 5th, February 5th. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
And vote on the amendment.
Now, we need to vote on the, thank you, on the approved amendment, approved agenda, she's getting me confused.
Sorry.
Those in favor of voting for the amend, agenda as amended, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you.
The next item is to approve the county commission minutes of January 22nd, 2013.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any questions or concerns about any of the items that were listed in the bills? We have a motion to approve the bills. Those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Did we miss the minutes?
I think we did.
That's what we just did. The minutes.
Oh, I thought we did the bills.
No.
I'm ready, ready to go this morning. I got here too early.
The next item is bills to be paid in the amount of $293,758.31.
Pay the bills.
Second the bills.
Thank you. Any questions about the bills? If not, we will go, we have a motion and a second to approve the bills of $293,758.31. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously.
Today there are no reports. The next item is personnel. Item A is to approve the routine action.
Second, or a motion. No, you do second.
Second.
It's catching.
Yeah.
We have a motion to approve routine action. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same sign, motion unanimously passes.
The next item is application for abatement. Kyle Helseth.
Good morning, Commissioner. Kyle Helseth, Equalization. We're requesting an abatement for Penny Malwitz, record ID 80860, in the amount of $647.31. This is the difference on the owner occupied status, and it identified a problem for us that we didn't know existed, in that when people go through divorce proceedings and they take back their maiden name, it appeared to be a sale, a direct transfer. That's something else that we have to catch up on and correct. We ask for approval.
Motion to approve the abatement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any questions for Kyle? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion unanimously passes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
There are no notices and requests, and there are no planning and zoning notices or a petition for compromise of lien. The next item is opportunity for public comment.
Good morning. Any items that's not listed on the agenda, if you have comments that you would like to make, I think there are a couple people that expressed an interest, so if you'd like to come forward, and you do need to identify yourself and your address, please.
Good morning. My name is Deb Klebenoff, and I live at 25293 473rd Avenue in Baltic. Still getting used to that long number. And thank you for letting me come this morning. Anyway, the first thing I'd like to say is just thank you to all of you. I've talked to so many of you already about this issue, so I know you know what I'm gonna be talking about. Kyle, wherever you are, Ken has helped me a ton, and I think I've met with all of you, but just so thank you for taking time and looking through my stuff and all that type of thing. In the meantime, while I'm talking my short time, I'm just gonna be flipping through some pictures, and what these are, are some befores and afters, because we are down in that property doing some work. So I'll try to keep my finger, finger going while I talk, which is pretty multitasking, but we'll see. No, I gotta go up and down, I'm sorry. No, it's stinging me. No.
We have an assistant, Deb, to help you with that.
Down, I know. Thank you. I go down. If I wanna go back, I go up. Okay.
Thanks, Trish.
So, basically, the issue is the retreat at Pointer's Ridge and the property taxes that have accrued. And this is just a picture of the property. Our house is over here. This is the Sioux River, and this is 273rd and 473rd. And this little piece of property that looks kinda like the state of Minnesota is what we're talking about. And here are the buildings that are still there, and it's a wooded hillside, and all lovely and so forth. But, as you know, at the December 4th Commission meeting, this issue did come up, and it was recommended that be denied for reasons of, you know, there was, there was no authorization to give an abatement on this tax. And I, I didn't get up and talk because I didn't know that it was really my place yet. It was kinda between the J.C.'s, and it was their, really their tax issue. But afterwards, I, I called Ken and said, can I, can I talk? And he said, yes, you can talk anytime you want. So here I am. Basically, this property, and I just want you to notice these 2005 pictures, how nice everything looks, it's kinda funny, because there it is now. The land was donated, it's about 21 acres, and back in 1967 by Dr. Robert Giebing, to the J.C.'s to develop this camp for exceptional kids. And ever since that time, for nearly 40 years, it operated as a nonprofit. The last year they operated was 2005, and then, as all of you know, the land was just sat. They, they didn't have any money, and they, they couldn't go on. So, in 2008, it began to accrue, accrue property taxes because it was no longer being used. And the property has never been used as a for-profit. I like that "help me" door. And the J.C.'s, in fact, when they, when we started kinda poking around, mostly because we built a house up there, we found it was the J.C.'s that owned the property, and they really wanted it to go to another nonprofit. And in fact, I think there's some conditions, even in South Dakota law, that it needs to pass to another nonprofit. And so, basically, I've been doing paperwork for the past three weeks as far as a business plan, we are a 501(c)(3) organization, tax exempt, we're a South Dakota nonprofit, I've got my board, we've been doing all that kind of stuff. I've been up in county offices a number of times about everything, Scott Anderson and planning and zoning and so forth. But, we want to return this to a desirable use. I mean, as you can see, I'm sitting above this property, and it's a wreck. And so, as a neighbor and as a citizen of Minnehaha County, I'm not terribly thrilled about sitting down there right now. But also, I think that it's something that South Dakota can use, our whole state, it's a nonprofit arts retreat. We are the only state in the country that doesn't have one of these, it's basically a place for creative thought. And if you've ever been down there, and some of you have, and some of you haven't, if you haven't, you should come down, any day, even in this state, everyone that comes down says, this could be so amazing. And it can be, and it will be. I just would like to ask you today, basically, to see that if we could return this to your agenda, and hopefully find some common ground, I understand the whole abatement thing, it's been many years, I sent, I, you should've each gotten a packet from me, and I had a cover letter on that, and I'm hoping we can maybe find something, but if it could just be reconsidered to help us continue, I should hurry along here, because these are all bad ones, but look, yay, good things are happening. It's getting cleaned up, and we do have a quick claim deed to the land right now, and I understood that included all the bad, so there's a clean patch of floor. We're working, we've had volunteer days, and we want to just make this a usable, great attribute for Minnehaha County again. So I'm just asking today for you to reconsider and put us back on the agenda, well, not to reconsider, to get us back on the agenda for possible reconsideration of this ask. I believe that is all I have to ask today. Almost have a bathroom there. But, so.
Thank you, Deb. Questions for Deb?
Deb, what's the name of the 501(c)(3)?
The Retreat at Pointer's Ridge.
And when did you take ownership of it?
We got the quick claim deed in September 2012.
Are, are you now tax exempt, or are you applying for tax exempt for 2012?
Our corporation is tax exempt.
Okay. But you need to talk to Kyle about getting it on, I think, right now, is that correct? If we're getting about the taxes deal, I'm just looking at 212 forward.
Oh, yes, we have filed.
The 501(c)(3) is a federal tax exemption.
Yeah.
The tax exempt status for property taxes has not been granted by the Board of Equalization.
But I mean, they have to apply to us, don't they, in March?
And they have.
And they have?
They have, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for Deb? As you know, we can't take action today because it wasn't an agenda item, so we need to defer this to a later date if we choose to do that. Any other questions, Mr. Beckus?
Well, I don't see any legal basis for us to do an abatement, however, as an outside agency into a 501(c)(3), she could make an application as an outside agency, seeking the same dollar amount of the abatement for funds in our budget next year, correct, Mr. McFarlane?
It certainly would be a creative way to address the issue, but, yeah, I mean, we, during the budget process, we send application forms out to our various nonprofits and those that have requested funding from the county, and that for consideration in the budget, and that is an opportunity that they can avail themselves of. And what they choose to do with the money, that's obviously something that you would have to control.
Exactly.
As part of the budget hearing process.
Mr. Kirk, can I ask another question?
Absolutely.
So, Ken, assuming that we do give them the money, and they actually spend it on that tax abatement that's been accruing, that would bring them current, correct?
Again, I, I don't know the exact amount of the taxes, I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of $12,000, and that, and so, and again, that would depend on your level of funding, and that, but that's an interesting idea.
Well, I just wanna make sure that if they understood that we provided this particular funding, that it would go to that, not to some other project like the Sioux Empire Fair.
And the thing that you need to realize, that the application that they're making for tax exemption on the property will actually be for
Next year.
The 2013 taxes payable in 2014, if I'm not mistaken, from Mr. Helseth. I mean, that's, that's the date of it. So you're really talking about this accrual of taxes right now.
Already have 2012.
Yeah, 2012 payable in '13.
It's gonna be about $15,000, including this year.
Well, you definitely would wanna put that in the application.
Commissioner?
Well, we still have an opportunity to go back and abate the 2012, the one at the hearings, correct?
You know, and one of the things I think we need to check on, I mean, with the number of years, I'm pretty sure we're fast approaching tax deed time on the property, and that, so, once the property is taken as tax deed, and that your, your option, you have a little more options as a county for disposition of tax deeds, and that, than what you might have prior to the tax deeds taking place, if you choose not to go the abatement route.
If I may, if there's no other questions, when's the dead deed process to be completed?
I'm not sure, and I'll have to go to the Treasury and see what this tax deed status of this particular property is. I, I don't know that right now.
I think it's 60 days, I mean, it's, we've gotten a letter.
It's 60 days. She got a letter in 60 days.
But when was the letter dated?
Yeah, yeah, December, because I came and saw you at that time, and you, you said we get another letter for 30 days, which we have, so I figure it's about 60 days from now. I was figuring March was our deadline.
Okay.
Roughly.
Any other questions for Deb, or Kyle, or Pam, or any comments from any other people in the audience? Is there any action on deferring this to a date, or we need to do something with it, or frankly, leave it the way it is?
Do we need to do something by the tax, I mean, if it goes tax deed sale, then they could get sold, bought off from under them, right?
Well, we still got time. It appears that there's 60 days before this whole process is completed, so.
But you got the letter in December, so we're looking at February?
Do you want me to run the audit check?
You know, that would be awesome, if you could do that, I appreciate that, Pam, thank you. Kyle, you don't know off the top of your head, I'm sure.
Rich just told me what was on top of my head.
Okay. Thanks, Rich.
You have 60 days from the letter to redeem the taxes. With that being said, after it's been taken as tax deed, you have another 60 days to come back and have a do-over.
Oh, okay.
So that's, I think, what they're talking about here, is the additional 60 days on top of the first 60 days.
Yeah.
That was for the first one.
Yeah.
It's a little quirk in the law.
That's what Ken said.
Other questions for Kyle, but thank you, Kyle and Rich?
Well, if I may.
Mr. Beckus?
The quick claim deed is still on the land, but my understanding is that just because it's a tax deed, what that basically does is it allows them to basically fight it out with the tax deed owner, and my guess is that with the amount of money that they're probably gonna pay at a tax deed for this particular property, they'd obviously have opportunity to negotiate that with, if, if another tax deed person came up and bid on it and got the tax deed, there would be some sort of negotiation between the parties, but we don't want it to go to that.
Will you control what properties appear on the tax deed auction?
Right, yeah, okay. Well, I'm sorry we sent Pam away, but I think we have our answer. And Deb, you're well aware of the fact that we've had two opinions, frankly, on what this is about, and they're both the same, so that will have to be addressed also. I think for right now, it appears that we will have to come up with a conversation about when we want to, or if we want to see this again, and probably get it done within 120 days total, if you will. Commissioner Heiburger?
I just thought we weren't supposed to have any action today, and that we're not gonna do.
We're not gonna take any action today. We're just talking about options. Correct? So, any other comments?
No.
Okay. Thank you, Deb. Do we have anyone else in the audience who wants to speak about an item that's not on the agenda? Morning, Kathy.
Hi, I'm Kathy Brechtelsbauer.
Yeah, you're gonna, I think I can spell it, but I would probably mess it up.
Oh, we need to spell it?
And I also need your address, please.
Does that use up part of my time spelling?
No. Depends if you're carrying a petition or not.
Because that's kinda long. I'm at 2900 Poplar here in Sioux Falls. Well, thank you for the opportunity. I'm here to ask the Commission to do your part, to help speak up and help our state take the Medicaid option for people that need medical coverage in our state. It's something offered in the Affordable Care Act, and the state legislature and governor together will be deciding whether we're gonna take it or not, and it's just a wonderful thing that would help a lot of people in our state, and I know you're here to help people, so I'm asking you to help support that and help get this through our state government. And actually, people are, I think, trusting and expecting that you would be out there helping on this, because of course, counties have so much expense on medical bills that aren't getting paid otherwise, and a large portion of those would get paid by Medicaid coverage that we could get for low-income people. I understand, it's like hundreds of thousands of dollars every year that you cover medical bills, so this would be very helpful to your budget, I know you have other things you'd like to do with the money, like helping nonprofits and all kinds of other things on your list of things that you use money for. And it would also save money for a lot of other charities. What's happening with some charities, people have told me that folks are trying to pay medical bills, and so then they can't pay on some of their other bills, and they're coming to charities to get help with their electric bill, or their rent, or things like that. And so it would help in more ways than we think of immediately around our, our county and our state. I brought some graphs here that I struggle with to try to make, to show you, can you see the one on there? Okay. So this one shows the big gap in coverage right now. The dark ones are, this is as a percent of poverty line, okay, the incomes, the vertical axis. And so the dark ones are folks that have Medicaid eligibility now, so you'll see children up to 200% of poverty level, pregnant moms up to 133%, and then parents, if they're really, really low income, can get coverage. But, like we met a mom last week, she works cleaning offices at night, and for like, I forgot, eight, eight dollars an hour, something like that, and if she gets a few more hours of work, she's gonna move from that dark spot up into the striped part right above, which is a big gap where she won't be eligible for her Medicaid card, she'll lose it. And then over on the far right one, those are people without children who don't get any eligibility at all. And the reason I've kinda shaded in that orangey part at the top of each line, those are, and that, people in that category are gonna be eligible to get insurance that's on what's called the exchange, that marketplace that's subsidized, so it's only a certain percent of their income will have to go toward their medical costs. And so, that's why, that's why just that lower part on the two right columns is, is the hot topic for today. Those are people that just don't have any medical coverage now, and they won't be eligible because of the quirks that happen with the Supreme Court decision. So, the next chart is the folks who would be able to get coverage if the state would take the option, and you'll see, it's a lot more coverage than we had before. It goes a little higher than the 100% poverty line, because it goes up to 138%. So, it's really a lot more coverage, a lot more people would get medical coverage. And right now, they're just, I need to say that there are some people in those low-income categories who can get coverage through work or offered it, but it's very rare, as you can probably estimate. In fact, in South Dakota, I think there's a figures from Department of Labor, people offered medical through work, only, for the poorest 10% of workers, the lowest paid 10% of workers, only 10% of those are even offered coverage through work. It's a big contrast from the highest income of workers, where 90% are offered, so it's one of the huge inequities in our, in our coverage and our healthcare in, in South Dakota. And what's happening is that for people in that, in that gap up there on the striped part, if you wanna go back to that, what's happening is, very few of them have, have coverage, and people are often not getting the coverage that they need, and not getting the healthcare that they need. You might think, because of all the bills that come to you, that people are getting coverage, and of course, a lot are, and the bills are being shared in many ways by others, but there are a lot of people that don't even get the coverage they need. They're not getting diagnostic tests, those are some things, so if they get referrals from the health clinic, or the, from false clinic, or free clinic, those clinics can't cover MRIs or other diagnostic tests. Prescriptions aren't necessarily getting filled, people aren't getting chronic care, care for their chronic conditions, a lot of people aren't getting acute care even. And I'm gonna leave with you some examples. It's, it's a flyer that I started making the other day, and I haven't finished it, so you'll see, I haven't finished the whole section of it, but I'll leave some examples of four cases, and these are just from the very first doctor that I asked, it wasn't my husband, a different doctor, that show how people are not getting the care they need, even though we have false clinic and we have a free clinic. And I should mention that a lot of places in the state, there is no community health center, and there's hardly, probably no other free clinic, so even those kinds of care is not, are not even offered. So there are lots of gaps where people are not getting the coverage they need, and our state and our county would be healthier if we would have this healthcare coverage. People would be more able to get to work, to care for their children, to do things that people need to do and need the health, need to have good health to do. Even found, my husband just showed me, two days ago, he ran across this New England Journal of Medicine article from September, and where some people did a study of states that had expanded their Medicaid coverage, as has been allowed, and they studied the states that did, and then they took states right next door to them that didn't, and they compared, and they found a lot better medical coverage and even fewer deaths in the states that had taken the medical coverage. And the, the death rates dropped by about 20 people per 100,000. I mean, if you think of Sioux Falls even, I don't know how many in the county, but how many people are in a county? 200,000? I don't know.
Little more than that.
Yeah, so it'd be like, it'd be like 40 fewer deaths a year in Sioux Falls, if that were applicable. And of course, they, they admit that, a small sample, because there are only seven states total in, in the, in the study, three that had taken the coverage, and four adjacent states that hadn't, so you can't say for sure, but this is, this is very striking. They said, they agreed it was significant. So this is a good deal offered to the state, it's a low-cost deal, it's a, you know, good financial deal for the state, and it's a really good healthcare deal for the state, and we really would love it if our county commissioners would help work for this, talk to our state legislators and our governors about how important that would be for the people of South Dakota. And so, I'm asking you to help work on that.
Thank you, Kathy. Any questions for Kathy? Thank you, Trish.
Yeah, thank you, Trish. I'm gonna give you these examples, and these little flyers, I just brought five of them.
That's fine.
So, isn't there, there's a Commissioner missing, so
Yeah, yep.
You can get it to him. Thank you.
Thank you. Pam, I know you went on the aerobic program for a little while because of us, we have an opinion from Rich, but we'll let you confirm it, since you already did the work.
Okay. It said, when I went back and looked at her records, it said that the letter that we sent her in December was just a notice that we were gonna take, do the title search, and that she should pay it within 30 days to stop that, and stop that from happening. We have proceeded with the title search. When we get the results of the title search, then, then we'll be able to take the tax deed, and then at that point, it's my understanding that you people could abate the taxes, but not until then.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate your extra.
Is that what Rich said, too?
Pardon?
Is that what Rich said, too?
I was close. He sent Kyle up there as the guinea pig, so, but thank you for your, right. Any other opportunities for public comment? If not, we'll go to the next item.
Oh, regular business. Item 10 is consider a motion to approve the purchase of five police package Dodge Chargers in the amount of $109,270.21854 each, from a contract number 16413, competitively bid and awarded by the state of South Dakota, Two Billion Auto, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Kristin Trana.
Good morning. Kristin Trana with the Sheriff's Office. I'm calling, or I'm coming to you today requesting authorization to order, excuse me, five Dodge Chargers to be used as patrol fleet, to replace some of the aging fleet that we are currently using.
Questions for Kristin? I believe in my conversations with the Sheriff, these are in this year's budget.
They are?
Yes, they have been approved prior, so, and we do not have the vehicle replacement policy in place at this policy in place at this point. And I believe these are the five oldest and most used with mileage issues, and.
They will easily exceed whatever its standards, the policy puts out.
It would appear that would be accurate, yes.
I would move to approve.
Mr. McFarland.
Hold a second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second.
Just for point of information, since Commissioner Benega brought it up, I mean, we have prepared a draft of such a policy, and I know Commissioner Benega's got first stab at it right now, and that, but we have been, we have a draft prepared. And you're right, at least the, the recommended mileage that we initially started off in the draft, I think these five vehicles far exceed that initial estimate, so.
Mr. Heiburger?
Just another comment that I don't know if was made or not, but these are purchased off of the state bid.
Correct.
Which was another recommendation of the board.
Yep. We have a motion in a second. Any other questions, other comments? If not, those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, the same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Item 11 is to authorize the chairman to sign equitable sharing agreement for participation in the U.S. Department of Justice asset forfeiture program. Kristin Trana.
Good morning. This is a fairly routine action on an annual basis that I bring. It, by signing this agreement, it allows that if there's any instances that come up through the year, that we would be able to request federal asset forfeiture dollars if there's a case that we're involved in, then we already have this paperwork completed. It is a requirement of the Department of Justice to have it done by a certain date. And I apologize that I don't have that date in front of me, but we're well within that date. And so these funds, if we do have any opportunities to receive them, are being, are able to be used for any sort of law enforcement purpose.
Yes, Commissioner?
When you get these funds, Kristin, are they outside the budget? I mean, if you get $100,000 or $50,000 over here, that's money you have outside your normal budget to work with?
Correct, correct.
Other questions?
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any other questions, comments? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Kristin.
Item 12 is consider a motion to authorize the Director of Equalization to purchase one Chevrolet Impala in the amount of $17,879 from Lamb Chevrolet, Oneida, South Dakota, from contract number 16415 competitively bid and awarded by the state of South Dakota. Kyle Halsow.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kyle Halsow, Director of Equalization. We've come before you this morning to ask your permission to purchase a new Impala. This replaces a Chevy S10 that we acquired from Emergency Management in 2002. It has approximately 175,000 miles on it, and the mechanic last week told us that the most proper thing to do with that vehicle was to euthanize it.
[laughing]
The number three and the number five cylinder are shot. We're trying to decide where to bury it at at this point, so.
Can we get a second opinion from Rich?
[laughing]
Yeah.
Obviously, any questions for Kyle? Appears not. Any action?
I'll make the motion.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve item 12 to purchase the Chevy Impala for $17,879. And again, I believe that's part of the state contract. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
The next item is consider a motion to supplement $500 to the juvenile detention center budget, ASN 16778, representing a donation memorial for Denny DeVoss. Ken McFarland?
No, it's not.
Oh, sorry.
Todd Cheever from the JDC. We're asking that, we received a $500 check from Sue DeVoss as memorial for her late husband, Denny. She specifically identified this to go to our, for food for the kids at the JDC. After Denny's funeral, they donated food to us that was left over, and the kids made some thank you cards, and we sent a letter, and apparently it touched them. And she would be here today if possible, but I talked to her on Saturday, and she is in Texas. So, very generous gift. It would be, I specifically said it would be used for things like Easter, in addition to food, you know, food that we are already serving, possibly, you know, things like a field day, Thanksgiving, Christmas, those type of special occasions where we don't get things like ice cream bars and pop and things like that from, from CPM. So we will use it specifically for food.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions or comments for Todd? Commissioner Heiburger?
I just thought it was an extremely nice gift because so many people think of giving money to the county JDC kids. And, you know, a lot of nonprofits get money which goes to wonderful things, but not very often do you think about the kids who are sitting in JDC on holidays. I thought it was really nice.
Yes. Very thoughtful gift, and I think we need to acknowledge that from all of the commissioners at some point. So if you would make sure that happens, and we'll sign that note of appreciation. And it's awesome that somebody would think of that. So thank you for bringing that forward.
You need a motion on that, too, don't you?
We do, and we do.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the generous gift. Those signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion unanimously passes.
The next item is an update and status report of the 88th legislative session on bills that impact Minnehaha County. Robert Wilson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Robert Wilson of the Commission Office. I'm going to be referring to the paper copy of the legislative updates in front of you. We're still making some updates and putting in new hearing dates late yesterday afternoon. Got a number of bills to talk about. Last week seemed to be a very busy week for introducing a number of bills. As always, I have picked out a few to talk about. If there are others on this list that I hadn't mentioned, please feel free to ask me. I'm going to jump forward a couple pages to get started to House Bill 1105, an act revised the maximum security deposit for residential premises. And this is a bill that our Human Services Department has expressed some concerns about. Currently, owner, property owners, managers can charge up to one month's rent in the amount of a deposit. This would allow that to go up to two times the rent plus head of language. Based on perceived risk, it could go even higher than the, two times the rent for the security deposit. And obviously, HS has some real concerns that that could hit their service population disproportionately hard and could really have some effects on the services they provide as well. That bill has, is scheduled for a hearing next Monday morning in House Judiciary. Next page, House Bill 1113. 1113 and 1115 are a number of, I guess what I would call cleanup bills to the open records legislation that began a couple of years ago, and I think we've had a, had a number of tweaks come through each year since. 113, an act to expand the definition of teleconference to include certain meetings conducted through electronic text colloquially, and to require the retention of certain records, text colloquially meetings for public inspection. Really, the essence of this is if you, a public board gets into a situation where essentially a meeting is being conducted with text and emails going back and forth, there would have to be a record of that saved and available for public inspection. Obviously, that is a practice that you have worked very hard not to do in any way, and really would not apply to this commission, but it was brought forward. The real issue with this is the inclusion of text messages, because there, there really is not a way for us to hold and retain text messages, and so that's a concern. And I know the association is aware of that and making those concerns known as this bill moves forward. It did pass House State Affairs last week, and to my knowledge, it has not been given for further consideration, but this will be coming back again. Somewhat along the same lines, House Bill 1115, an act to clarify the deliberative process exemption to certain open records provisions. And as it states right now, any document that is used within the deliberative process would be protected from open records inspection. This looks like it is intended to close what could be perceived as a loophole, that if a document wouldn't normally be part of the deliberative process, you bring it into that process, it's not all of a sudden protected. If it was otherwise, if it otherwise would have been an open record, it does not become closed because all of a sudden it is included in the deliberative process. Next page, House Bill 1175, an act to establish sanctions related to the hiring of illegal aliens. And this, this gets a little interesting because of some of the requirements that it would put on our state's attorney's office and our sheriff's office, that if a report allows an individual to make a report to either the Attorney General's Office or State's Attorney's Office if they believe they have knowledge of illegal aliens working in, in the county. And that provides a framework for investigation and reporting that would, requirements that would have to be undertaken by both the sheriff and State's Attorney's Office. And it is a, could certainly be considered an additional work, workload and burden placed on these offices.
Isn't this an issue that belongs to ICE and the U.S. Attorney and the U.S. Marshals' Office, not us?
Yes. I think that would be the prevailing opinion.
They're just dumping down their problem to us. Thank you.
Yes. That, that's been referred to House Commerce and Energy, but at this point has not been scheduled for a hearing. House Bill 1188, an act to provide for the ascertainment of whether a mentally ill person is dangerous, and if so, to rescind his or her right to bear arms and provide penalties for violations thereof. This one was brought to our attention by Scott Peters, the Lincoln and Minnehaha County Wellness Board. I think Scott had some concerns on this one, just because of some vague language in this, and what is the definition of a dangerous person, and some of the ramifications of what he sees as some vague, vague language in the bill. Again, this one's also been referred to House Health and Human Services, but has not been scheduled. Moving down one more, House Bill 1234, an act to provide for the limited, limited exception of provision that exempts sports shooting ranges for public, from public nuisance laws. And this is an issue that you've dealt with a few times on a local issue here in, in the county, but this would allow that if there, if a public nuisance can, if, if the range results in a significant threat to human life or private habit, habitation, a nuisance can be constituted and an injunction may be prescribed. And that would just allow for an additional bubble of enforcement if it were passed as, as currently written. Again, that one is not yet.
Robert, could you find out from Wilcox?
Yeah.
What kind of origin of this bill is, where, I mean, he could, he could give us a feel of where, where it arose from.
We, we can certainly do that. Looking at the, the list of sponsors on that bill, it, it appears to be a collection of folks from all over the state. So it doesn't look like it's solely concentrated.
There are three or four from our area, two.
I think I saw at least one, yeah. On that next page, moving over to the Senate side. A few weeks ago, we discussed Senate Bill 38, an act to increase the penalties for sexual acts between juvenile corrections facility employees and detainees. I would just simply say that this one is moving fairly quickly. It passed the Senate. 35, nothing has passed House Judiciary, and I would imagine that will be before the full House before long. One that all, we've been watching very closely, Senate Bill 70, an act to improve public safety. That, again, is the Governor Dugard's Criminal Justice Initiative bill, has moved past the Senate, is scheduled in House Judiciary tomorrow. And so that one also appears to be moving, moving quickly. I'm getting close to the end, so I don't mean to be taking too much time here, but Senate Bill, down at the bottom of that same page, Senate Bill 128, an act to provide authority to counties to prohibit and restrict the use of fireworks and to declare an emergency. This is one of the bills, one of the platform bills for the association, would give you the right to restrict the use of fireworks on the Fourth of July. It's scheduled for a hearing tomorrow. Senate Local Government. And the other bill, supported by the Association, is Senate 129, act revised certain provisions that dedicate property tax revenue for the financing of tax increment districts. Again, SDACC-sponsored bill up tomorrow in Senate Local Government. And the final bill that I would bring to your attention, Senate Bill 167, an act to require governmental bodies to keep minutes of executive or closed sessions and to define what circumstances the minutes can be viewed by the public. This one's come up a number of years in the past, has not gone far in those efforts, but again, would set up a framework of when minutes would be recorded in an executive session and under what circumstances those could be made public. Those are the bills that I was going to bring to your attention. I know there was one other one that Ken wanted to mention, but I would stand by for any questions if you had any questions that I.
Any questions for Robert? Ken, have an addition?
There's a couple of other interesting bills that have grabbed our attention that I wanted you to be aware of. One is not on your list, House Bill 1224. It would give you the ability that in lieu of publishing your legal notices and papers, you could designate an official internet site where all of that information would be posted. And then there is some requirements that you would have to do some fairly regular publications within your legal newspapers to say that here's where this information is available on our quote "official" or designated legal internet site. And so I thought that was a fairly interesting bill that came up. One of the things we're also looking at is Senate Bill 124. And what this does is increase some transfer fees associated with property transfers down in the Register of Deeds office. It's a township bill, but it greatly increases some of the transfer fees, and then allocates a portion of those transfer fees to the townships. And I believe as the bill is written, it's to wherever that property happened to sell. That's the township that would get that money. And that, and again, that's, that's a revenue that typically comes to the counties, and that, and we just went through some major fee increase legislation last year. So I know our Register of Deeds and some of the state officials are keeping a close eye on this one. One of the other ones that had caught my eye was Senate Bill 156, and that, and this is a township road bill, and that however, I was really surprised, is that what it does, it was amended in committee, and it allows the townships to create their own road districts. And that, and those road districts can consist of a half, no more than one half mile of township roads, or three miles of streets in an unincorporated town, or five miles of streets in a rural subdivision. So you can take those kind of properties, create a road district. And then what I thought was interesting is, this also increases the special front foot assessment to do maintenance on those roads from its current 80 cents per front foot to $2 per front foot. I mean, that's a pretty steep increase. And what's even more surprising to me is that it passed out of Senate taxation in that amended Form 522. So it's on, it's in the Senate now for consideration.
It's a colossal tax increase.
Here's another bill that we're, another township bill that came up, Senate Bill 157. This is, you know, counties right now, when they have wind farms, could a substantial portion of some of that taxed to counties, and the townships were looking to receive a portion of that wind taxes, primarily impacts up in Brookings County right now because of some extensive wind farm development. But the bill was amended to give townships, they were asking for 20%, and I think it went down to two and a half as amended. went down to two and a half as amended. So, I mean, I know this is one that our assessors is following. And then the last one that I, that caught my eye was Senate Bill 210, and this is a fairly recent one as well. And what it does, it repeals the current valuation method of AGLAT on the income basis and restores everything back to market value assessment. So we'll see where that goes. Probably not far, but it, that's out there. So like you said, there is a lot of bills popping out there that will have, I think, impact on us. There's one, another bill that, House Bill 1195, it's another fireworks bill. It gives you the ability to adopt an ordinance to say you may not discharge fireworks on township or county right of ways that end up depositing debris onto private property so that you could do an ordinance on that, so. Lots of stuff.
Thank you, Ken. Commissioner Hybarger, I think was first.
Just Ken, a question on Senate Bill 124. He said what they're looking for was increasing the fees with some of it going to the counties. Were they looking at...
To the townships.
Townships. Were they looking at a new fee with, and splitting some with the county, or are they looking at taking some of the money we already have and breaking it off?
Looks like new fees.
Okay. Were they planning on sharing some of it with the counties since we would be collecting more fees?
I need to take a closer look at that, and that, again, I've had some conversations with Julie on this one, and again, there is some concern because of the fee structures that we already went through last year and the fact that this is a traditional revenue source that comes to counties and then trying to get split off into townships, so.
Commissioner Kelly? I'm not sure what township responsibilities are, but is, what, do they have any expense incurred in a property transfer?
Not really. Not that I think...
Can they justify asking for part of the money?
I mean, they, on plating, they have to ju, they have to determine what they get if they're going to maintain that road, you know, during a plating process for a subdivision, but as far as an out and out property transfer, I'm not sure that there is.
But they're, they are obligated to maintain the road...
Correct.
Unless they call it a low maintenance road.
Correct.
Any other questions?
I just thought the $2, you know, from 80 cents to $2 on the front foot assessment, that was, that was a pretty steep increase, so.
Other questions? Thank you, Robert and Ken. Any new, no, we're at the...
The next item is liaison reports.
Any liaison reports? Commissioner Hybarger?
I do have a report. I went on Saturday to the firefighters' annual meeting, which was over, held over at the courthouse, the museum courthouse. There were 112 people in attendance, so I was kind of surprised when I walked in there. What a huge crowd. And they gave a short report that I just wanted to share some of the stuff with you. There were 48 students trained as certified firefighters in Minnehaha County in 2012, and that represents 40% of the total trained in South Dakota. 12 of those students were trained as medical first responders. This last year, they had a grant from FEMA, and I don't know if you get up early enough in the morning to watch the commercials, they've been running commercials, I believe, on a daily basis. That grant is to run out, I can't remember, maybe this summer or maybe by fall. I can't remember the date for sure. But that recruiting program, they've had 40,000 visitors to their website and 200 people have asked for more information. And I just want to give, you know, a hand of applause or whatever to the firefighters in our county, because without them, the expense for us to maintain firefighters in a rural county would be astronomical. So just to thank you.
Thank you. Other liaison comments or reports? If not, we'll go to new business. Any new business? Kyle?
I guess as a point of interest, when they're talking about Senate Bill 210, raising it up to the market value of agricultural land in Minnehaha County, we would experience a raise from $750 million to $3 billion if we went to market. We're at 25% right now. So I hate throwing around those big numbers, but it's scary, so.
That is a big number. Thank you. Any other comments for new business? Any old business? If not, we do have an executive session today for personnel and contract negotiations. Like a motion to adjourn into executive session, please?
Motion to adjourn for contract and personnel.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for adjournment into exec session. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We'll convene in...